Ms. Teener, please call the roll.
Buffalo.
Here.
Hampson.
Here.
Clanton.
Present.
Gabriel.
Present.
Jordan.
Here.
And Martin.
Present. Okay, the first item on the agenda, we're having the school board workshop for, to review our Dr. Birdsong's proposal of the school year 24 budget. Sorry, I had to turn it around. Okay, so first up, we have Dr. Birdsong and Mr. Jenkins.
Yes. Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for being here, staff and our community. So we have prepared a PowerPoint presentation for you, and you should have received both sets of questions now by this time that we did spend a lot of time preparing and providing responses to you. So hopefully between those responses and this presentation and being able to address any additional questions, you'll have what you need as it relates to my proposal. So at this time, Mr. Jenkins will come forward. He will talk through some of the financial pieces. Then we'll have Mr. Billups, who will talk through some HR pieces, right before Dr. Poe, who will address all of the academic questions. So without further ado, Mr. Jenkins.
Thank you.
Dr. Birdsong.
You're welcome.
And good afternoon, Dr. Martin, Vice Chair to Buffalo, Dr. Birdsong again, and members of the school board. You recall, last week, Dr. Birdsong released the budget. We've received, as Dr. Birdsong said, a few questions, so we'll talk about those. First, we'll start with the...
Turn it on.
How does one turn on?
On the side.
Okay, so first, we had a question about the error on the VDOE, the Department of Education calculation tool that we're provided. School districts across the state use this tool and have been for a number of years. It allows us to determine how much state revenue that we can expect to receive based on the number of students that we're projecting. So the Department of Ed will project student counts for districts across the state, but we are free to use local student projections, and often we do. So there's a mistake in the calculation tool that amounts to $4.1 million for our fiscal '24 budget. And as I said last week, we discovered this after we printed the document, so that is not reflected, this error is not reflected, or has not been corrected, in the budget that we reviewed last week. We recommended a couple of, actually five or six things, that would allow us to keep the budget in place pretty much as proposed with some adjustments. The first one was to reduce the amount that we budgeted for facility improvements. It's in the general fund budget. We would reduce the amount from $3.3 million to $1.8 million. There is still money available in the capital budget in, from the reversion accounts and also from the revenue true-up that is not designated to specific projects. We had indicated that we would use those funds as contingency funds to address cost variances and also projects that we simply hadn't foreseen. But costs for capital projects are running higher than our estimates, so that was our hope. So we would use money that we would otherwise have used for the general fund. We would use money in the capital budget. We have $1,280,000 in the textbook fund reserve that was established three or four years ago. This was also from reversion funds. We've not utilized those funds, so we would be recommending that we use those textbook funds to replace the reduction in state funding that's related to this error. We're also recommending a reduction in the number of bus drivers. We currently have a little over 100, maybe 110 drivers that are staffed. We're woefully short. At their transportation department, it's all hands-on deck when it comes to delivering students to and from school. We haven't had more than 160 drivers in quite some years, so we think that that is an appropriate level to fund. So we would reduce funding from 100, or we'd reduce the authorized positions from 197 to 160. Because we do anticipate vacancy savings in our budget, we didn't budget 100% of the 197 positions. We would bring that down to 160. Practically all would be funded, and that would save $740,000. We had proposed a time and attendance system that would be, that would sort of marry with our payroll system and automate the record-keeping, at least time-keeping, and also employees' leave in absences. That we have in the budget, our operating budget, $156,000 for that project. We recommend that we move that and use CIP or capital reserves. So again, those funds are coming from reversion. So that's the first item, and this item, the fourth item, are sort of painless to the general fund, but it does result in less capital funds available for other purposes. And finally, our budget for unemployment compensation is a bit higher than it needs to be, so we're recommending pulling that down by $150,000. The total of those adjustments, $4,126,000, is the amount that we would need in order to balance our budget. So with that, we'll move to the strategic plan and the alignment of the budget to the strategic plan. You'll find that all aspects of our budget do align with all of the goals of the strategic plans, namely student excellence, making sure that we have a workforce prepared for our students, that sufficient resources are available in equitable places, in an equitable manner for all schools and students, that we have community development, community participation and inclusion, and that we provide a safe and appropriate, safe and secure environment for our staff and for our students. So you'll find that there are aspects of the strategic plan, or that are, all aspects of our budget address those of the strategic plan. This is sort of a visual of our budget for fiscal '23. You see, we have a $383 million budget. That's this year. And next year, we had proposed $401.3 million. That'll come down because of the error, the error in the count tool, but as proposed, it was $401 million. And you can see, each item in our budget does address all five of the strategic goals. As an example, instructional services, which encompasses the vast majority of our budget, almost three-quarters. We services are aligned to student attendance. Most of the cost, in fact, 93% of the cost of instruction are for staff compensation. And Dr. Birdsong has focused new resources on employee pay to ensure we have quality staff that are available to address student excellence. Both human and material resources are provided to ensure equitable service delivery to a wide spectrum of students. As another example, central administration, these are division-wide costs, and they address all of our strategic goals. Moving on to, we were asked to provide some samples of pay raises. So sorry, we are moving completely to another manner, another item. The first slide, we've got pay raises for teachers. That's not my phone.
It's not.
If it is, might just turn it off. Thank you. So we have here seven examples of teachers. I won't bore you with all of them, but I just walk through as an example. For teachers that are currently on step one, these are almost always first-year teachers. They were just hired this, beginning of this year. They are currently paid $49,500. That's their base pay. They may get a little more if they have a master's degree or something else, but their base pay is $49,500. We propose pay raises of $4,000, which would bring them to step two, earning $53,500. That is just under a 10% pay raise, 9.8. A teacher on step four, currently paid $50,748, would get a $4,000 pay raise. No compression adjustment because they were not here before 2016, and their current pay would be on step five, $54,748. Now, we've got a couple of examples with teachers that have compression. So a teacher on step 10 that was hired before 2014 would receive the regular pay adjustment of $4,000, which would be one step. They would also receive two-step adjustments for compression, amounting to $2,253, would bring their pay from $55,762 to $62,015, and you see they're also moving from step 10 to step 13. Whereas a teacher that was hired after 2016 at the same step 10 would receive only the $4,000 pay raise, would move to a step, to step 11, earning $59,762. You see something similar in step 20 for a teacher hired before 2014 and one hired later. A teacher that is currently at the top of the published pay scale, that would presumably have been here in 2014, practically all of them were, currently, their current pay, $84,910, would receive the regular raise of $4,000, would also receive a compression adjustment of $4,285, which is equivalent to two steps, and would earn a little over $93,000, and their step would be, I've got 30-plus because they're in effect off-scale above step 30. We have similar information for classified employees. We have three teacher assistants. The one on step five is receiving no compression adjustment. The one on step 10 has a one-step compression adjustment, so they were hired after February of 2014. And then a teacher assistant that's on, currently on step 18 and was hired before February of 2014, that employee would receive a two-step compression adjustment. So the teacher currently on step five moves step six, earning $1,845. Teacher assistant on step 10 would get the regular raise, just as the first teacher did. A one-step compression adjustment would move to step 12 from step 10. And the third would move three steps in total from 18 to 21, and their pay would go from $25,600 to $28,600. Two examples of bus drivers, too, but I won't bore you with that. With that, Mr. Billups, I think you wanted to talk about regional pay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
School Board Chair Martin, Vice Chair Ms. Buffalo, School Board members, Dr. Birdsong, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
What I have for you this afternoon is a compilation of information that our HR team has pulled together based upon some regional data that we were able to collect. So what you'll see here are regional, Region 2 comparisons. So these are all of the school divisions that comprise Region 2. Some of them, of course, are cities, and some are smaller counties, but I thought that it would be good to show you all of this information. And what you see here on this first slide is for classroom teachers with their starting salary. We attempted to find out information relative to what these proposals would be for the '23-'24 school division. However, no school divisions were willing to give us that information. So what you see before you is the current information as published for the current '22-'23 school year. And under the proposed rate for our school division, we do lead with what we're proposing for the '23-'24 school year. Looking at this, this next slide is a teacher pay, again, regional comparisons at various step levels. We looked at step 1, 5, 10, 20, and then up to ultimately 30. And what you see at step 1 is basically, if you wanted to break it down, Virginia Beach is the leader there at step 1. But importantly, what you notice is that once we hit around step 10 in Norfolk Public Schools, we begin to take the lead with this, with where we are. We increase more so in competitiveness once we, once we get to that point. And if you recall, that was the strategy and the philosophy a few years ago, for us to reward longevity within our school division, and that's why you see we begin to take the lead once we hit step 10 and start moving forward. This is just another way to look at that growth as we move forward, with Norfolk being on the red line. And as you can see, as I said, once we hit around step 10, that's when you see Norfolk begins to take off as we head into the step 20 and towards someone's retirement into step 30. Also, we looked at regional compensation comparisons when it comes to the Transportation Department, which would include our bus assistants, our drivers, and our dispatchers. We've highlighted for you, again, with the proposed figures for '23-'24, Norfolk takes the lead at that point for bus assistance, bus drivers full-time, as well as bus driver substitutes. And one thing I wanted to point out about some of the data that we received here is, again, the minimum wage actually went up on January 1 to $12 per hour. So as you can see, some of these school divisions are paying right at the minimum wage as they stand right now. Then we looked at auto technicians within the Transportation Department as well. And with these, you see, we looked at autotech 1s, autotech 2s, as well as... Not the leader, but we are definitely increasing in our competitiveness when it comes to autotech missions. Very important positions when it comes down to facilities, HVAC positions, as well as plumbing positions. Again, we're not the leader, but we are competitive when it comes to these two areas. Moving on to school nutrition employees. Again, we take the lead when it comes to cafeteria monitors, meal applications clerks, school nutrition assistants, part-time and full-time, as well as substitutes, as well as an important position for this, for that area, is the truck driver. And so we are becoming a leader there. And again, noticeably, some of these divisions right now are at the minimum when it comes to the minimum that they can pay. Attendance technicians, very important job as well. And again, we are very competitive with what we're proposing for the '23-'24 school year, taking that figure up to $18.15 an hour. Security officers, again, another very important position. We are very competitive there, and we'll take the lead based on what we're proposing for the '23-'24 school year. If it says NA, that means that no information was provided on their website, nor were we able to get any information from them. Okay, so those are our regional comparisons that we pulled together. The next program that I'd like to talk about is something that we're calling an Ignite pilot for innovative school staffing, and we've selected Lindenwood Elementary as the pilot for this program that we've titled Ignite. And the goal of Ignite is for us to attract and retain highly-qualified, effective classroom teachers for Lindenwood. Lindenwood was selected by us for this program for the following reasons. Unfortunately, it leads the school division in teacher vacancies right now at 33%. So what that means in round numbers is that of 24 classroom teachers, eight of the positions are technically vacant with not having a licensed or endorsed teacher in the classroom as recognized through the Virginia Department of Education. However, understand that of those eight vacancies, though, five of them are filled with long-term subs as of the printing of this report. So there is someone in the classroom with the children. It also, we took a look at the academic performance of the 2022 SOL pass rates. Reading and English were at 50%, mathematics at 20%, and science was at 11%. So our focus is going to be on teachers who are currently assigned to Lindenwood Elementary School, or teachers who are new to the school division, and teachers who voluntarily transfer to Lindenwood for the '23-'24 school year. Eligible teachers for this program would be the teachers of record, as well as special education teachers, all of those, again, very critical to providing the day-to-day instruction for our students. And what we're proposing is to offer them a one-time $5,000 bonus in addition to any other signing bonuses. And the bonus would be contingent upon them meeting regular attendance in accordance with school board policy, GAAR. So there is a policy out there that informs our employees of how often they're supposed to be at school, because if they're not, there is a penalty that could be associated with that. Also make them eligible for additional tuition reimbursement. Currently, all of our employees are, full-time employees are entitled to one class at one of the schools that we work with. In this case, we would offer them to have an additional class paid for by Norfolk Public Schools, so that would be two classes for these classroom teachers and special education teachers who commit to going to Lindenwood. And then also provide them a $500 allowance for classroom supplies. So these are the things that we're talking about or looking at to try to ignite, as we call it, excitement about going to Lindenwood Elementary. And so we would be piloting this program over the '23-'24 school year to see how effective this would be in helping us secure licensed and endorsed teachers, and at the same time, being able to commit to Lindenwood Elementary through the end of the '23-'24 school year. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Billups.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Billups. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Dr. Martin, Vice Chair, Ms. Buffalo, members of the board, and Dr. Birdsong. Currently, for the 2022-23 school year, there are 18 schools that are accredited with conditions, nine schools that have a Level 3 in at least one area, and five additional schools with a Level 2 that were all required to participate in the academic review process. When planning the budget requests for next year, the following are included to support our most academically challenged schools. Starting in the summer, there will be a professional development program that includes teacher pay. These offerings will be designed around data disaggregation, lesson plan development and alignment, pedagogical strategies to include culturally relevant practices, and behavior management. These offerings will be offered to teachers and schools that will be projected to be accredited with conditions for school year '24 based on school year '23's SOL data. Additionally, there will be pre-scheduled professional development activities during off-contract time that will include payments for teachers to participate that continue with job-admitted professional development that was offered in the summer, and to support additional needs identified throughout the school year. The placement of division instructional coaches is redone annually to ensure schools with the highest needs receive the additional support. Also, senior coordinators and specialists from curriculum instruction and learning support special education will support teachers during weekly planning sessions. There will be increased coaching at these schools from the central office. A continued focus to include professional development on data-driven, small-group instruction at both the elementary and secondary levels. Professional development on specially-designed instruction with a specific focus on literacy and math, mathematics, as well as a priority staffing of supports such as PALS tutors and university instructor tutors. In an effort to further support schools with high needs, there's a focus on equitably-staffing school supports across the division. The placement of the 12 division-level instructional coaches, again, is based off end-of-year data to ensure they are staffed where the need is highest. Although all schools have positions for reading and mathematics specialists, if there's a vacancy or a long-term opening, coverage is provided by specialists to higher-performing schools until the position is filled. There is also not only increased staffing for university instructor tutors, but also a priority of placement in our higher-need schools. These schools also receive higher amounts of tutoring funds to pay teachers for before-and-after-school tutoring support, as well as on the weekends. Additionally, next year, our ESL family engagement specialist and the instructional specialist will prioritize our highest-need schools, and with the addition of the requested senior coordinator for ESL, even more support will be available. Similar to the university instructor tutors, there will be, there will continue to be increased staffing of PALS tutors at the highest-need schools based on PALS data, as well as increased support time from division-level coordinators and specialists. There will also be additional coaching and professional development for reading and mathematics specialists in lower-performing schools to support data disaggregation, instructional practice, and the coaching of teachers. The division saw great hiring success with the Grow Your Own program for reading and mathematics specialists. With reading, the cost was approximately $223,000, and 17 teachers completed the program, with 12 being hired to start this school year. At the beginning of the 2021-22 school year, there were nine vacancies compared to the one vacancy that we had at the start of this school year. That, and I want to add, that vacancy was actually created during the summertime. So we, exactly, right? If there was not a Grow Your Own program, there potentially could have been 13 vacancies in these positions this year. Similarly, for mathematics, with a cost of just under $300,000, 19 completed the program and 13 were hired, leaving us with zero vacancies at the start of the school year compared to 10 the year prior. So thinking ahead, the administrative cohort is now in their second semester with a tentative graduation date of summer 2024. There are 19 participants, and the estimated cost will be just below $160,000. As Mr. Billups stated in his presentation to the board at the last meeting, we're also participating in the Continuing Education Support Pilot, which pays for courses for current, full-time, non-teacher employees to earn their teaching certification. Additional offerings planned or in their beginning phases include gifted endorsement, library media specialist, board-certified behavior analyst, and school psychologist interns. Beyond the Grow Your Own programs, there are supports in place for provisional teachers to assist them in being successful on the literacy assessment, as well as their needed praxis assessments. This slide shows the school-level academic and SEL support positions provided through the budget. For a more detailed report, please refer to the FY 2023 School Assigned Support Positions document. As seen here, there are 338.5 positions within the budget to provide additional supports academically and for students' social-emotional learning needs. As you're all aware, our black student population comprises approximately 57% of the school division's overall student population. As such, it is critical there is a strong focus on Tier 1 instruction that includes the integration of culturally-responsive instructional practices alongside differentiated instruction and Tier 2 and 3 academic supports as appropriate. The following strategic investments are included: Providing professional development with a focus on culturally-responsive teaching; The continued use of PALS tutors using the SIPs curriculum, as well as monthly professional development and coaching for PALS tutors; Purchasing texts for in-class and at-home libraries with diverse culturally-relevant reading materials; Working with school leaders and teachers to disaggregate data in order to create a focus of support on students with gaps in learning; And to support small-group learning at both the elementary and secondary levels; Increasing hands-on activities through the purchase and implementation of algebra and science kits; Ensuring there are endorsed, gifted resource teachers to support our schools, all of our schools; Realigning human resources as appropriate, as mentioned earlier, in equity of support staff; And continuing to staff the middle-school mathematics and reading support blocks with teachers and tutors. Specific items to support our students with disabilities include investments in instructional resources and materials to support the following: Post-secondary transition skills to include independent living, communication, career development, and self-advocacy; Specially-designed instruction with a particular focus in literacy and mathematics; Developmentally appropriate, accessible text for students with disabilities, and expanded access... accessible text for students with disabilities, and expanded access to books and libraries; And social skills instructional materials and activities. To support our teachers, administrators, and paraprofessionals, there will be investments in professional developments focused on IEP development for teachers, to include data collection, goal development, development of present level of academic and functional performance, understanding SMART goals, the overall development of a standards-based IEP, and specific research-based specially-designed instruction with a focus on literacy and mathematics. A paraprofessional's professional development series or community of practice focused on roles, responsibilities, and strategies to support students with disabilities. For general education teachers, professional development on inclusive practices and an understanding of special education on how to best provide instructional and behavioral supports to students with disabilities, as well as for administrators on inclusive special education leadership series focused on instructional leadership of students with disabilities for improved outcomes and basic compliance and procedural monitoring. There will also be professional development to provide intensive behavior supports for our students with disabilities. With the request of a senior coordinator positioned for ESL, there can be an even more concentrated focus on the success of EL students across the division. Next year, there will be Sheltered Instruction Observation Protocol, or PSYOP, professional development for content teachers who work with EL students. This will help the teachers address their EL students' unique needs and advance academic language development for them. Further professional development for ESL teachers, school-level administration, and content teachers focused on research-based learning supports for EL students. ESL family engagement specialists will continue to better align their schedules to support and serve schools with higher population of English learner students with academic and social-emotional needs. I'll now turn it back over to Mr. Jenkins.
These address compression, step compression. You will recall that there were a few years back in the early 2010s when we didn't give step raises. We were in the middle of a recession, and the resources were not growing, those from the city and those from the state, so we were having cutbacks. And we had a few lean years that we didn't provide step raises. So, we had proposed a compression plan to you in late June of last year. This would be the second of a three-year plan, and that's what has been included in our budget. The affected employees would receive between one and two steps, either one or two steps. This impacts a pay of 2,097 employees, a little over half, 56% of whom are teachers. Those employees that were hired before February of 2014, that is, in a contracted position, would receive two bonus steps. In addition to their normal one-step advancement, they would receive two additional steps. Other eligible employees, that is, those hired between February of 2014 and January of 2016, would receive a single bonus step. The cost of the second phase is $5,750,000, and 62% of that goes to employees who are on teacher contracts. In the little box to the lower right, you can see that the way it's working is employees that were hired, their most recent hire date was before February of 2012, they would do five compression steps. One was received this past July, two are scheduled for fiscal '24, the year that we are working on now, that we've proposed, and they would be due two additional steps the following year, fiscal '25. And you can see each year, the number of compression steps goes down by one, because the compressed areas, or compressed years, were between 2012 and 2016. So, employees that who are in the second, I'll say cohort, would be due four steps. They received one this past July, would receive two in fiscal '24, and one in '25, and you can see the others. So that costs $5,750,000. That is included in our recommendation to you. We received a question as to, well, what would it cost just to do the whole thing and be done with it in fiscal '24? So, if that were to happen, affected employees would receive between one and four bonus steps. Would impact 2,097 employees, 56% again are teachers. The cost to complete would be 10.74, 10 and 3/4. 61% of that is for employees under teacher contracts. So it costs about $5 million more than is included in our budget. And I guess I will state the obvious, we have budgeted for all available resources, so if we add, we need to identify something to pull out. And in the bottom rectangle, you can see how the steps, the bonus steps, would be provided. Those hired before fiscal, excuse me, February of 2012 would receive four bonus steps, three bonus steps for those hired between February 2012 and January 2014. Then the next cohort would receive two, and the next one. I believe that is all we have for you tonight, but we will be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins.
Thank you.
Any questions? Ms. Kamson, Dr. Gabriel, Mr. Jordan.
First of all, I'm a visual learner, and these charts have been great for me. They really helped me see some things that I wasn't sure of before. And that goes to everyone with them. Our visual people are, we are, and I need to see it on paper, and that was, every single one of you presented that very well. I particularly am thankful for the way you've shown the steps again, because I really wanted them to finish the steps this year, and I realize that we have so many things. And I like the way I look at it now and see it. I'm more comfortable with it. I feel like it's very, and I was often looking at it from the point of view of someone who got caught in this, and would have been at the very beginning of it, because I've been working here a lot longer than 2012. Well, just a little bit. And so I think that was in my mind, Howard, I never, of course, will get this, a little thing that everyone keeps forgetting, those of us who retired.
We have an open teacher slot somewhere for you.
But I see it now, I feel much better about it, and so we'll hit the big things this coming year, and then you'll be cleaning off the ends of them in the following year. So I think that I'm feeling very supportive of it now, which I have not been for the whole past year, as everybody heard me complaining about it all the time. Look at him, he's going, yes! That's so true. But I really just wasn't thinking it was. But that's how I felt, and I would like to say, I also, now that I'm seeing the, in a chart thing like this, seeing the salary increases, I'm feeling better about them. So, thank you to our HR department for talking about that. And so I think that went, I feel much better about it. And I know there was no way to compare us for next year to anybody else, because they were being so secretive. And I am looking with apprehension to what's going to happen when they start out. We all saw that, you know, the superintendent of Virginia Beach has the biggest budget up that's ever been made by anything in Virginia, I think. So who knows what's going to happen there. So it'll be interesting when we see that. But I feel like we're on the right track, and we got ahead of everybody. So that was, I'm trying to get hit real fast, my different ones. I do have a question about why do we never see data for school principals? I don't have any idea what's happening to the principals, where do they go, what kind of increases are they getting? Would that be something that we could also get? Because we've heard about almost every other job in this entire district, except the job of the principal, and what's happening with their pay.
We can get that information for you.
And I, sorry, I never thought about that before, but I just wonder, because a lot of our newer higher principals for a while were being paid a lot less than some of these teachers' salaries. And we just seem to never remember that we have principals who are running these schools that work really hard.
Okay, all right.
And, Mr. Billups, I believe, didn't you prepare some scatter plots with a principal and assistant principal salaries?
Yes.
Yes.
They're in the email.
They're in your packet, with principal and assistant principal salaries.
Oh, and this one, oh, this one.
Yes.
Oh, okay. I don't know how I missed that, then. Thank you for bringing that to my attention.
You're welcome.
And that's probably something that the principals would like to hear, too. So maybe we could somehow.
And I've spoken to them directly.
Okay, all right, thank you. I would like to say that the thing that I was, there were a number of things I was impressed with. This is so well-done. I mean, it's so professional-looking when you do these things. And this is not the first time that we see it. It's a pattern that we now have, that, thanks to our superintendent, that has gone very well. But I was immediately drawn to the presentation today, when Steve started, because he was talking about and showing us visually how well-aligned this budget is with our strategic plan. I know when I was a principal, when people came and asked for stuff, I would always say, "How does that match with our plan?" And that's what this did. I mean, this is a really tight match. I mean, it's way there, you can see it everywhere, and that was so well-done. Congratulations, too. I know everybody worked on it. You've all been working stuff like crazy. So I think that those were, I mean, just make sure, before I let it go. Yeah, that's it. That's it! I'm actually feeling very supportive of the budget now. And that was all due to these very precise visual charts. So thank, and everyone knows that's, if you want me to be in a good mood about it, that's what you need to do, give it to me visually. Because I can tell you, when you start talking, I just kind of.
Yeah, it's on out.
Yeah. So thank you, everyone. Good job.
Thank you, Ms. Kamson.
All right, Dr. Gabriel, go ahead.
Thank you. I would have to agree with Ms. Kamson's sentiments. This is an incredible budget. It's student-focused, but it's really student-responsive. Because every item that you have identified in this budget goes back to a data point of where students either need additional help, acceleration, or advanced rigor. And I would like to highlight that even though we have not really discussed a lot in doubt about the advanced rigor part, it is embedded in the budget. The rigor is there. And so I will commend you, Dr. Bertson and staff, on just a phenomenal budget, and it is incredibly easy to read and review, and to kind of digest. I am very excited about the IGNITE program at Lindenwood. And again, going back to the data, there's a specific reason that you chose this school. I'm going to share a little bit of feedback with you, if you don't mind. What the incentives that you have prepared for the staff is wonderful and incredible. And every staff member that's working there, I know, is going to be very hard-working, very dedicated to the students and the student achievement. I would like to ensure that we have qualitative oversight of what is happening there, and I know we're going to, this is going to be year zero, that this would happen. But I do want to see test scores and feedback qualitative, start, mid, finish, so that we can assess the impact of something like this. And hopefully, we can see some trends. And we can see that, you know, hopefully, the students, I have no doubt, the students will be successful when they have a dedicated individual in front of them. But that oversight to ensure that the quality instruction is taking place, I like the absenteeism monitoring, but also the data, following the data, as I know you will do already. So I would just like to provide that feedback. And then, again, highlight the point in your budget that you had mentioned about the small-group instruction. That is very critical for all students. So that is the feedback that I would just like to share with you on. Thank you again.
And I certainly appreciate that feedback. And most recently, I had an opportunity to do a site visit at Lindenwood, and the acting principal was in a classroom at that time. And we had the opportunity to walk into other classrooms and see what was taking place in the building. So our children are learning, and we're very concerned about our children there, and we want the very best for them. And so if this pilot program ends up being successful, we'd like to expand it. But we were very strategic in choosing Lindenwood as the site for this pilot, and we're excited about it. We really are.
Thank you, Dr. Gabriel. Go ahead, Mr. Jordan.
Thank you. Also appreciate the presentation and the updates to the questions that were asked. It's a few things. One, I guess more for the Board to consider as we move towards adopting the budget. I appreciate the, let me start with the alignment with the strategic plan, I think is good. I would like for us to, as a Board, to have some additional conversations around, really trying to, at least for me, have an even deeper understanding of the budget and it tying to advancing some of the SMART goals we may have. So if we're seeing that students are at, you know, X at literacy level rates now, then, and we've set some goal over the period across the strategic plan, how this budget and each subsequent budget supports that growth, hopefully, at an accelerated rate. I really would like to see us even more so consider how we can grow our, grow and excel our literacy, you know, really that being the center of our student excellence, you know, really focus on being a division of readers that are reading at and above the state averages. On the IGNITE program, or the IGNITE pilot, I'm excited about seeing that. I think I would like to see it considered to a larger cohort than just one school. You know, perhaps looking at the, if I understand correctly, the non-Level III schools, where we see linkages between the challenges with student outcomes and teacher vacancies. I understand the Lindenwood dynamic of having 33% vacancies. I think we have schools that are not that high, but still are probably high enough when you look at the vacancy rates and look at the academic trends, that we might consider expanding it beyond one school, and then talking about how do we provide the necessary supports to the administration to consider it beyond just the one school. I think it's a great idea, but I think it's needed beyond just the one school. And then for now, with the compression and the competitiveness of our compensation package, so, we talked about before that many of our surrounding school divisions have one-to-one policies, where it's one step, one year, one step. And I'd like to advocate to the Board again that we adopt such a policy for Norfolk Public Schools, and then look at our compensation and our plan towards moving in that direction. So, when I look at the compression step schedule, and I mentioned this the last couple of years, it's a little hard for me to follow it against the hiring date. But I appreciate some of the charts that Mr. Billups provided to us, because what I'm looking at is, no matter where the, when the person was hired, what we were seeing before with compression, I'll just use assistant principals for an example, I think when we first looked at it, it was like 75% of the principals were considered at a step below where they could be or should be if it was in comparison against a one-to-one. So to me, as we look at our progress towards, I guess, decompression, that we'd be more, consider being more deliberate in looking at where each employee is against their years of service and the step that they're on. I think that's where. I think that's where we were finding the compression. It may have been amplified by those who were in the division during the dates that were identified. But if we have someone that's, you know, I'm just using an example. If we have someone who's, has 20 years of service, but they may be on step seven as an assistant principal, you know, why is that and how do we get that corrected? I think that's the real measure of our success, or at least of our goals. And if we're going to be competitive, making sure that we're looking at what our surrounding divisions are doing, not only in terms of salary, but also in terms of that process, how many steps they have, and where folks fall on the steps. So I think that's something that I would hope the board would consider looking at a little more. And then, last point for now is looking at reviving or reconsidering aligning our individual learning and wellness supports for students and wellness supports for staff with an updated, I want to call it an alternative educational program, but a individualized educational program that also takes in consideration social, emotional, and behavior supports. That more and more, not only on school visits, but just what I'm hearing from folks in the community, that we really need to figure out how we can a provide the supports that students need based upon some of the distractions and challenges and issues that they may have in terms of being focused in the classroom. Likewise, with our teachers and other staff who are trying to provide supports not only to the classroom, but to each individual student. And then those students that we find need to be outside of the classroom for a period of time, that we are giving them the academic supports that they need and the emotional and behavior supports that they need, so that as they transition back into the classroom, that it's a good fit for the child and a good fit for the classroom as well. And I think our data is showing us that we have some challenges there that we can tackle. And so I'd like to, moving forward, for us to have some more conversations about that. Thank you. I appreciate the presentation and the answers to the questions. Thank you.
Mr. Clanton, go ahead.
All right, thank you, Dr. Martin. I'd like to just, you know, with my colleagues have already said, Dr. Birdsong, and the respect you and your team in putting this together and giving us the alignment, making it very clear, I mean, particularly for those who are watching this from home, our staff members, parents, that they see that there is a laser-like focus. Things can always be better. And I know that there are a lot of things that have come up in the respect of how we can do that. So following with that, going back to the Ignite program, which I was so excited to see about for Lindenwood, I did have a question around that one. And that was, I know that maybe two years ago, two, three years ago, we had some hard-to-staff pilots. And so I wanted just for the, for this body here and for others, what's different about this particular program than what we've done before?
Mr. Phillips, come forward. I'm gonna let Mr. Phillips speak to that. But we had that exact conversation. Because we too were concerned that years ago, there were pilot programs within the school division that were deemed not successful. And I think it was Mr. Phillips who provided that report to the school board. So we did try to come up with some other strategies to really encourage teachers to stay and make that place Lindenwood the model, the place to be. Be supportive of teachers, provide the professional development, the additional supports for students, et cetera, et cetera. So, Mr. Phillips.
Okay. So what Mr. Clanton is referencing, for those of you who are not familiar, is a few years ago, we did offer stipends to what was deemed the six, six of the hard-to-staff schools within the school division. So four of them were elementary, and then two of them were at the middle school level. And what that consisted of at that time was basically a bonus/stipend payment to them if they committed, those who were already teachers at that school, as well as those who would come there. And in retrospect, what it was, was a bonus that was given to them for coming to Lindenwood, well, Lindenwood was one of the schools at the time, but coming to those schools. But it was a standalone. It was just the bonus dollars themselves. And so we wanted to, and it wasn't very successful. In the end, in some cases, it got worse, you know? In a couple of cases, two or three people may have stayed on, but it really wasn't a significant breakthrough or success. So this time around, you know, we wanted something that had some excitement around it. Why, we chose the name Ignite, so that a bonus, cash bonus, is part of it, but it's not the end-all. It's part of it, but it's also, we want to show you that we want to help you with getting your classroom together to be exciting. So here's $500 to help you do that, so you don't have to come out of your pocket, you know, with that piece of it. We want to show you that we can help you continue your education. And because it's provisional, if we end up with a lot of provisional licensed people, part of the way that they can use those funds is not just to take classes at the university level, it can also assist them with getting those tests done associated with a provisional license that can also be expensive, such as the RVE and the VCLA, those types of tests. So that's a piece of it as well. So this time, we wanted it, we wanted it to be more like a package of some things we're giving you, as opposed to just, here's a standalone bonus. So these things that we're offering, coupled with, as you all have asked for, the additional supports for the school, monitoring, monitoring of attendance, being there as resources for those teachers, to help them feel like they are in an environment that is conducive for them to be motivated, to want to excite and ignite Lindenwood.
So as a follow-up to that one, so my colleague, Mr. Jordan, brought up the potential of expanding this. So do we have an average amount of what we're anticipating as a cost for this particular program at Lindenwood?
Yes. I've costed it out based upon if we were to, basically Lindenwood has 24, approximately 24 FTEs at the level that we're speaking, the positions that we're speaking of. The cost of the, the cost of the bonus, 5,000 times 23, is like, 23, 24 is like 120-some thousand, something like that. The tuition reimbursement, the average cost of a class is about $2,200, $2,300. If we give them an additional class, that's about $53,000, $54,000, something like that. And then the classroom allowance of an additional $500 would come to like $12,000. Altogether, we're talking about an approximate $180-some thousand if we were able to fill 24 spots with licensed and endorsed teachers for 23, 24 school year.
So has there been any consideration of making this a two- or three-year program?
Right now, just for the pilot, we are looking at the 23, 24 school year, so that we can then evaluate and come back and look at what our success was. Was this successful at Lindenwood? Will it continue for a second year? Do we then roll out additional schools that are also in need? So that's where we are right now, because we recognize that this is an additional investment coming at this point. So we wanted to consider that.
The reason I'm asking is because the last time we did this, it was a one-year term. And I think that's part of why it would be not as attractive to some teachers, because they don't want to go somewhere for a year and then move somewhere again the year after, that if it was extended to two or three years, that it might attract more teachers.
Now, the previous time, it was offered for, it was done for two years consecutively. It was done for two years. And it was proposed to do a third year in the beginning. But once we saw that it wasn't really successful after the comparisons of year one and year two, the decisions were made not to continue with the program. But it did go on initially for two years.
Wanted to wrap up on that one. So 180 approximate here, I see my budget guy over there. Is this coming out of general or Escher anywhere else? Where are these funds coming from?
Good evening. I believe we are looking at using Escher funds.
Okay. So we've got a time limitation on those dollars. But, so the governor hears we're using them.
We are using them and have been using them.
And have been using them. I did have another question, just a follow-up on that one. I know that we didn't talk about it so much, but I felt with some of the news articles around security, that if we could kind of, kind of explain a little bit more. I know that we, there's security guards, there's some supervisors in there. And there's also weapons detection systems, and it's not metal detectors.
That's right.
So if we could get, just a quick on that, just to kind of...
We're happy to do that. Mr. Mallory? While he's approaching the bench, while he's approaching the podium. I will give you a couple of reminders of what we shared. Please, Mr. Mallory. So we shared with you a couple of weeks ago, we are seeking 18 additional school security officer positions. We're also asking to increase the pay for security officers. We're asking to advance five of those positions to supervisor positions, such that each high school will have their own zone. So there'll be a supervisor for each high school zone, so we can have more consistent or continuity as it relates to safety and security across a school zone. And we also want to install these weapons detection systems in each school, in each school site. And Mr. Mallory is our expert and is going to tell you all about that. And he's so excited too, right, Mr. Mallory?
Absolutely. Good evening, School Board Chair and Vice Chair and School Board and Dr. Birdsong. We are already in the process of purchasing these items. Looking at, we've looked at several different companies. This particular item that we're looking at is called the Open Gate System, which is now, has been purchased by York County, Suffolk City, Prince William County, Hampton City, some of the other school divisions, Alexander City, Newport News, Portsmouth, Norfolk. We're looking at purchasing that. Those schools I just mentioned are the ones, school divisions that are in the process of purchasing those items. Evaluating the Open Gate right now is Virginia Beach, Chesapeake Public Schools, Williamsburg and James City, Roanoke City, and Henrico County. We chose this particular system, number one, it was a lot less, it wasn't as costly as some of the others, but yes, it's effective. There's another system out here called the Evolve System. But the Evolve kind of ties into, the network is very heavy and cumbersome. With the Open Gate, it's lightweight, which means we can move it around to different locations throughout the school. It's also doable outside. So we can use it at football games and other type of events outside. So pretty lightweight. We're looking at putting several in the high schools and secondary schools, depending on the number of entrances that we utilize, whether it's pedestrian entrance, bus entrances. And it's also, like I said, we can move it around to do random inspections in hallways and that sort of thing. It's pretty fast, because the metal density of weapons is different than a set of keys. So it can distinguish a set of keys from a cell phone or wallet or things like that. The only thing that we seem to have a little trouble with and to rectify that is laptops and Chromebooks. So the goal is to have a table set aside. So those that are bringing laptops and things, we slide them through the side without running them through. But we're able to probably set up two at each main entrance and allow people to just walk through. They don't have to stop, they don't have to take any things out of their bags. They just come through. This company that we're purchasing from, we already do business with the vendor itself. But the company itself, that the stuff is manufactured, comes from Europe. They've been involved in metal detection and things like that since 1975, dealing with the military, NAS, NFL, national sports, baseball, working over in places like Iraq and things like that. So the company's been around for a while with different types of systems. This system, I think, is going to be very great for us. It's going to speed up the process and allow us to do more inspections and to reduce the number of items coming into the schools especially. We don't want weapons coming into our schools. If you have any particular questions about the system, I'd be happy to answer that.
Go ahead, Ms. Buffalo.
Okay.
You're on. You're on. It's red.
Mr. Mallory, with the metal detectors, would there be additional personnel needed to, someone to man that at all times?
Yes. So you think about our elementary schools, we don't have, we wouldn't have the personnel. And we wouldn't have enough personnel all day in a high school particularly. So the goal is to identify staff that are willing to be trained, such as what do we call it, grounds patrol, especially the elementary schools. So we would train staff that would be interested in that and get them trained. And the training is pretty easy. The company would come out and provide us training and train the trainer, so we can go around and train folks to operate it. But it will, I wouldn't say additional staff, but we would have to identify those would have to operate it during the arrival time in the mornings, and trying to figure out what we would do for visitors coming into the building also.
And it's, one more. Are these going to be housed in middle and high schools?
Every school building. Every school building.
I can't wait.
Yes.
I guess with additional staff, and if I'm hearing it right, an additional duty outside of their normal day. Have we also talked about or embedded anywhere with a potential stipend or something for individuals for that?
We already have a grounds patrol stipend in place, and so we'll just continue with that.
Got it. Great.
Any other questions?
Just wanted to add to that piece, that remember that teachers have more, before-school and after-school duty. It shifts through it. So they're, they already, I mean, the teachers are doing things already so that they would already be used to it. It would just be a matter of moving around what the assignments are. Because there are already, any elementary school has teachers or other personnel in the building at the doors when they come in already. So this would be almost a gift to this wonderful program that he has, that they'll be able to just go into it, rather than us having to do a lot of the extra pay, because they're already doing it for, because, you know, we have those hours in the day. And that's what the elementary schools have to do, since they're so often left out of getting the other things, when they're not being left out this time. So I'm excited about it. Good job.
Ms. Campson and Mr. Jordan? Okay, anyone else? All right, and thank you, Mr. Mallory. Appreciate that.
We're excited.
Yeah, absolutely. I think everyone's looking forward to this. Okay, well, we are over our time, so we're gonna go ahead and...
Oh, are we?
Do we? Am I missing something? Okay. So we're over our time, just slightly. So we're gonna go ahead and head into closed session.
All right, so may I move that we enter into executive closed session?
Thank you. Can I get a second? Thank you, Ms. Buffalo.
It was Buffalo.
No, it's Tina.
Okay, thanks.
No, Ms. Buffalo, a second. So Ms. Tina, please read the motion.
Move that members of the school board go into a closed session for the purposes which are set out in subsection A of section 2.2-3711 of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended for discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of the school board of the city of Norfolk pursuant to subsection 2.2-3711A1 of the Act. The subjects of this portion of the session are the personnel on today's regular personnel agenda and additional personnel in connection with an ongoing human resources investigation, discussion or consideration of disciplinary and any other matters concerning students in Norfolk Public Schools that would involve the disclosure of information contained in the scholastic record pursuant to subsection 2.2-3711A2 of the Act. The subject of this portion of the session is the discussion of students on today's regular student support agenda in consultation with legal counsel and briefing by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation where discussion in open session would adversely affect the school board's negotiating and litigating posture and consultation with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by counsel pursuant to subsections 2.2-3711A7 and 8 of the Act. The subjects of this portion of the session are those set out above in subsections A and B of this motion and an unsolicited proposal concerning Maury High School filed with the board pursuant to the Public Private Education Facilities Infrastructure Act of 2002 and Board Policy DJFZ. Buffalo?
Yes.
Campson?
Yes.
Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
And Martin?
Aye. Welcome to the meeting of the Norfolk Public School Board, our business meeting. First, I'd like to get a motion to come out of executive session.
Dr. Martin, a move that we come out of closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. A second?
A second.
We had a dual second between. Ms. Buffalo, a second.
The resolution certifying executive meeting of the School Board of the City of Norfolk in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, whereas the School Board of the City of Norfolk has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas section two point two dash three seven one two of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the School Board of the City of Norfolk, that such closed business meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be resolved that the School Board of the City of Norfolk hereby certifies that. To the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the executive meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the executive meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the School Board of the City of Norfolk. Buffalo?
Yes.
Campson?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye. All right, the business meeting is.
Just for the record, Mr. Clanton could not vote to certify because he had to leave the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Clanton. Okay. Business meeting is now in order. First, we have the Pledge of Allegiance by our, led by our student school representative, Representative Nyamir. Yes, we request that all cellphones and pagers be turned off or to vibrate during the course of this meeting. Thank you. Please rise and remain standing for the reciting of the pledge.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. Thank you, Ms. Nyamir. Okay, up next, we have the adoption of the School Board Business Meeting Agenda. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
I move that we adopt the agenda as presented. Dr. Martin?
Thank you, Dr. Gabriel, in a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Campson. Any discussion?
Dr. Martin, if the, if the board would consider, before we adjourn, can we just have an item where we can get an update on what our meeting plans and assignments are for the next meeting or so? I know there is some, what we can expect in terms of the budget process. I know we're gonna have a work session, we got some tasks that we were supposed to do for the governor's training. So just a, maybe a few minute recap of what you see us doing the next, next meeting or so.
The agenda, the draft agenda is our, should be on board docs, but other than that, we don't have any other information and I don't remember what everyone's assignments were for governance training.
Okay, so then the, whatever's under the draft agenda is what we should consider?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Okay, go ahead, Ms. Tanner, please call the question.
Buffalo?
Yes.
Campson?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye. All right, thank you. Up next, we have our student musical and performance presentations. Ms. Tanner?
Yes, today Chairman Woman Martin, Board Member Superintendent Dr. Burtsong, NPS staff and attendees here with us tonight. We have a special musical performance by the Lindenwood Elementary School African Drum Club, followed by a special theatrical performance by four Larchmont Elementary School students entitled "Justice on the Bus: The True Story of Claudette Colvin," under the direction of Dee Crisco Assistant Principal. Channel forty-seven, will you please run the video first?
In the afternoons at Lindenwood Elementary School, the sounds of a wonderful enrichment program can be heard.
One of the benefits of having the African drumming club is to give our boys and girls another connection to something that they really like. You know, a lot of times they're drumming in the classroom on tables, so we actually give them an instrument that is meant to be drummed on. And when they use that instrument and find out that it actually produces sounds and people enjoy it, that just basically gives them a whole new purpose for what they're doing.
I believe the arts keeps children and adults from straying too far to the right or the left. I can only speak for myself, it kept me out of trouble.
They're playing on us in the Japanese, and it's originated in West Africa. So they have a master six notes, bass, bass, tone, tone, slap, slap.
Positive outcomes, finish school, graduate college. If you, if you fall in love with this instrument, there's a word that says if you bit, you get bitten by it, there's no antidote. So if this, you really fall in love with this instrument, there is no antidote. You will be planted from the rest of, from the grave, from the cradle to the grave, as they say.
Thanks to the work of NPS Wraparound Services, the Lindenwood Elementary School staff and community members like Baba Silken, the Lindenwood Elementary School students have access to an amazing after-school enrichment program that combines the elements of music, cultural enrichment, and the community. This is Act 2B Senior Coordinator of Music and Theater with another NPS Music and Theater update.
And next for our next Black History Month recognition, we have Dee Crisco, Assistant Principal of Larchmont, and her students here tonight. You want to join them?
First of all, I'd like to say thank you for having us. We're very excited for this opportunity, and I just wanted to give a short blurb about how this came about for me. So "Justice on the Bus: The True Story of Claudette Colvin" is the story of a fifteen-year-old girl who refused to give up her seat on a Montgomery bus nine months before Rosa Parks became the official face of the movement. At the time, Rosa Parks and Martin Luther King were supporting characters, they were on the fringes of this movement. It was Claudette's bravery and her steadfast refusal to be treated like a second-class citizen because of the color of her skin that initially thrust her into the limelight and kick-started the events that led to that famous boycott. I feel like it's important to tell these stories because it introduces generations to figures whose stories are not necessarily told in the history books. It endows us with a sense of pride about the contributions that people of color have made to this country. And I want people to recognize that black history is American history and that that history belongs to all of us. But most of all, I tell these stories because I want to create empathy and understanding in the students. I want them to recognize we are all in this together and the most important race is the human race. And so, without further ado, here are the Larchmont players.
Many of us are familiar with the story of Rosa Parks and how she famously refused to give up her seat on a city bus in Montgomery, Alabama. But months before, Rosa Parks took a stand by sitting down to carry her place in history. As one spectacle, this young girl made the same choice. Her name, Claudette Colvin, she was determined to fight for what was right, and in doing so, sat on a cross for equality, fairness, and justice. But instead, in the solider, as Rosa Parks, she was seen as a failed candidate, Claudette Colvin saw the path, and as soon as she saw it, she was not afraid. She was a fighter, and later, she began to challenge segregation. Not far behind, it's one of her great causes, was to protect our American community. "Justice on the Bus: The True Story of Claudette Colvin," was a vivid narrative of the story, yet little known, so far, it's a figure of the story is a new term of reference, where Maury High School protests in nineteen fifty-five, and that increases. The claim to historical figures is one hundred and fifty years, and Rosa Parks gained four votes, with a spotlight belonging to the catalyst, she is true, she is true, she is true, acid, very, very, very direct effect, in the course of American history. Well, it's not for her acid, very, very, Maury High School protests, the, the Montgomery West Park made a big one happen, segregation of students, and still. I grew up in Central Alabama in the nineteen forties. It was not an equal time or place to be a black person. Jim Crow controlled your life, you were fed all up and down. Maybe some of you ask yourselves, who's Jim Crow? For those who don't know, it's not a person, but it's, it's a system that operates primarily in a non-specific way, and it's a state. The goal of Jim Crow laws was to create a separate, equal way of life. I make a difference, I fight, I'm a fighter. You can watch, watch them up. Now, what is the difference between us, Claudette, and Rosa Parks? In a few years, they were very similar. You can all be very different, but at the same time, it's not a difference. But the fact is, rather, it was not a difference, it was a matter of fact, unless I get, I need to be back to the past, it was a difference in that now, still a difference. Think about, I was a woman, and certainly, I was a girl.
Thank you. What an awesome job. I was wanting more. I don't know about you all, but. Great job. Thank you for coming here and sharing that message with us, because some of us may not have known about Ms. Colvin, so thank you for bringing that to our attention. Thank you, Ms. Crisco, and volunteers and parents for sharing your talent with us on tonight. Thank you so much. Yes. All right, in the spirit of celebration still, please take note of the artwork around the room here. The artwork this month is from Maury Madison Alternative Center, Blair Crossroads, Oceanview, and Jay Cox Elementary Schools. But before we go any further, I understand Ms. Bazin is here and we need to do a motion to allow her in.
I'll, I'll handle that. Ms. Bazin, can you hear me? This is Jack Cloud. Ms. Bazin?
Yes, I can, yes.
Ms. Bazin, earlier this week notified the board that she would not be here today physically and would like to participate in today's meeting by electronic communication. And in order to do that, under the Freedom of Information Act and also the board's policy on this subject, I need to establish a couple of things on the record and then the board will hold a roll call vote to allow Ms. Bazin to participate in today's meeting. Ms. Bazin, I understand that you're asking to do this because of a personal matter. Could you state for the minutes what that matter is?
Yes, I am currently in Goa, India, with my family.
All right, and the other thing that had to be established was where you are participating from, which you've said. So given that, at this point, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll. A vote of yes or aye is to allow Ms. Bazin to participate in tonight's meeting through electronic means.
Buffalo?
Yes.
Campson?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
And Martin?
Aye.
And with that, we can go on with the meeting, and Ms. Bazin, you're free to participate and vote, just as if you were physically present.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
And the clerk's report notes the following services for February. It is Black History Month. Thank you guys for your performance again. Career and Technical Education Month, Crossing Guard Month, and Crossing Guard Appreciation Day was February eighth. National School Counseling Week was February sixth through the tenth. National PTA Take Your Family to School Week was, is February thirteenth through the seventeenth this week, and School Board Clerk Appreciation Week is this week. And also, congratulations to you, Mrs. Buffalo, for your service with Newport News Public Schools as School Board Clerk there. And then School Resource Appreciation Day, Resource Officer Appreciation Day is February fifteenth. And last but not least, as we also recognize February as Virginia School Board Association's School Board Appreciation Month, so let's give our School Board members a round of applause. And to show our appreciation, there's a cute little video for you guys to see. Ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, yeah. Yeah. All right, ready?[850.12]
Norview High School's NJROTC air rifle team won the Area 5 air rifle championship by defeating approximately 60 schools from Virginia, Maryland, Washington DC, and Delaware. As the first school from southeastern Virginia to ever win this prestigious title, they will travel to Sandy, Utah for the upcoming Navy National Championship.
So we're a very young team and a very talented team, and just to see that growth, going from novice just starting in the program to being a competitor, a competitive competitor on the national stage in a year, year and a half time is just a wonderful feeling for them and just watching them grow and having what I would call really unparalleled success. So it's really been wonderful.
This outstanding team of young people includes a sophomore who will be attending the Air Force AIM High Flight Academy this summer, and a senior who is ranked first in Virginia and 51st in the country in air rifle. Both students have learned valuable lessons from being part of this highly successful group.
So definitely taught me like resilience and like patience and being able to bounce back from going from when you feel like you're at your lowest to bouncing back and just doing amazing. It's also definitely taught me a bunch about like time management and learning how to like balance personal stuff with air rifle and school and all that.
I think one thing it's taught me already is how to balance my life because you know, my life has been really hectic. And then it's also like open doors with networking with different people and having conversations with different people. So like even though it's you know, just shooting, it takes a lot of dedication and it's really, this is very mental. It's 95% mental, 5% skill. So it's like a lot plays a part in it. So like family, schoolwork, and it's just like, it takes a lot of dedication and motivation to be mentally stable and to do this type of thing.
Pre-K students at Willoughby Preschool arrived at school a little early to participate in their very own robotics club. This program, which is also at Berkeley Campastella Early Childhood Center and Easton Preschool, was made possible by a Donors Choose grant. These young students were excited to learn how to use several kinds of robots, and they quickly adapted to any challenges they faced.
It is never too early to expose our youngest children to STEM robotics opportunities because it provides opportunity for problem solving, critical thinking, perseverance, because sometimes a robot doesn't do what they want it to do, so they've got to figure it out.
They're having a load of fun. We had, we had the mouse out and so they were learning how to code. They begin very beginning coding, go forward, go backwards, what they can do. Then we got the dash robots out, which uses fine motor skills and critical thinking in order to get the dash robot to go where they want it to go. This is the very beginning. This is when they are excited and hopefully they'll carry this with them through all the technology programs that are here in Norfolk.
Isaiah Gardens Middle School recognized outstanding students during their monthly breakfast with the principal celebration. This event not only gives staff the opportunity to reward students, but it also offers them the chance to connect directly with parents. After briefly meeting with parents and letting them know how important they are to their children's success, over 20 students received certificates stating why they were being publicly acknowledged.
So of course, we recognize students for their great academic progress, but most importantly socially, most of our kids are progressing socially coming back from the pandemic, being great role models, setting examples for students in and out of the classroom setting.
I think that it's really important because with them being, becoming young adults, they're not being seen. They're not feeling like they're being seen. They're, they're feeling like they're misunderstood. And so the ones that are putting in that really big effort, things like this are make or break for them. So I think this is great. It shows that leadership. It gives them that boost that they need in order to become better students.
I just feel like when you're helpful, you like, it like brightens me up. Cause like if I'm not doing something that's like good for people or like if I'm not helping people, I feel sad or like I feel like I'm not doing enough. It feels great. Cause like it's good to see that helping people can go so far.
Since 2006, students interested in the legal process have joined Norview High School's Model Judiciary Team. This extracurricular activity puts students directly in the roles of prosecutors, defenders, and witnesses. These students have been working hard on their own time and diligently preparing to compete against schools from other districts at the Norfolk Circuit Court Building.
The coolest thing about this program is the critical thinking aspect. Everyone's always talking about how do we teach kids critical thinking? This is the best way where it's low stakes. They don't have any grades, but they get to think about something they think is very interesting. We usually have either a murder case or an assault case or a search and seizure case where someone's locker gets searched illegally. And so it's always interesting.
I've learned actually a lot. I've attended last year as well and did the court cases. So I've actually learned a lot about how the court case, court cases actually work because I was there last year with the judges and everything. And it was just really exciting because I now know like every little step in the process.
One of my goals after I graduate college is to go to law school and become a lawyer. So I feel like this would be like a good like step for me to kind of be prepared for that. It's prepared me like pretty well because I know how to write like an opening statement, closing statement, how to get certain things out of witnesses when needed. It also like helps me with collaborating with like difficult witnesses and things such as that.
Thank you, Dr. Burtz.
Thank you, Dr. Burtz. It's always nice to peek into the schools and all the amazing programs that are going on.
Thank you.
Okay. Up next, we have our citizens' comments on agenda items only. This is including our superintendent's proposed operating budget for the school year of 24. So Ms. Tanner, please go ahead.
Yes. Today's speakers have signed up for public comments before the start of today's business meeting. If you would like to provide public comments for agenda items only, you are required to state the agenda items you are addressing prior to providing your public comments at this meeting. Where your name is called, please come forward to the speaker's podium, state your name and whether you have a child in Norfolk Public Schools, or if you are employed by the district and state your agenda items. One person is to speak at a time. If you are representing a group, state the group's name. You may ask your group members to stand in place to be recognized. Speaking time is limited to three minutes. A timer is set with an alarm that will signify the end of your speaking time. State your position and give facts and other relevant data. Avoid saying anything that identifies students or personnel information about individual employees. Personnel disciplinary and confidential matters may be addressed to the school board directly via email at schoolboard@npsk12.com. Comments should be addressed to the board and not addressed to an individual member. School board members do not respond to public comments at the time they are given, and any written statements or supporting materials should be given to the clerk. Dr. Martin, our first speaker for today is Melissa Garman, followed by Laqueta Mackey.
Come to the lectern.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's okay.
It's been a long day. My name is Melissa Garman. I'm a special education teacher here at Norfolk. I'm also a resident. And I wanted to talk about the superintendent's budget proposal. I've been reviewing it and making my way through its many pages. I'm not really a numbers person. Some more to speak about on a personal level and on an administrative kind of level. I can see that a lot of effort went into compensation for employees, but I do have concerns. Looking at the salaries and wages scale, the document has a lot of blocks. And we talk about a $4,000 pay raise, but it states in there that it's going to be a cost of living allowance plus a step. So if I do the math, that would be maybe 50%, $22,000 per block. So that when you move a block, you're going up a step to 4,000, or is it 4,000 block by block? Because we say 6.91%. When I was in the military, 24-year veteran, if we got a percentage, it went block by block by block. So when I read it, and I hear about this $4,000, but I hear how it's split, I have a lot of concerns about how it's split. I currently am step eight. I have a master's degree, not looking at my stipend. That $4,000 would equate to just below a 7.5% pay raise for me. If that $4,000 was put in that block where I'm at now, and that was my salary next year, if that makes sense. So clarity would be nice before March 1st or before future meetings on exactly how that's going to be dispersed along this pay scale. I wanted to tell you that the federal government gave 8.7% to Social Security VA disability, which I receive pensions, and the state has recommended 10% pay raises for teachers across two years. Are we matching state funds? Because we all know, they say they give it to us, but if we don't match it, nobody gets it. And then it's just soundbites for their careers. So is that even a consideration? And finally, the compensation to classified employees. Last year, mistakes created significant staffing shortages across all. As a sped teacher, I'm seeing that personally. My school is down a sped teacher. We're down multiple paras. Para professionals have got to make, and other classified employees have got to make more than the minimum $13.35 recommended in this budget. Our classified employees are our rocks as teachers. We need to consider more. Bus drivers got a $15 to $21 pay raise. We're looking at less than $2 in this budget. Please consider giving them more. We need them.
Before I call the next one up, we're going to move the table that's under the podium so they can get closer to the microphone. There we go. Laqueta Mackey.
Good evening. My name is Laqueta Mackey. I have 29 years with only Norfolk Public Schools. I served as a third grade teacher for 14 years and for 15 years as a math specialist. I'm currently the president of the Norfolk Federation of Teachers, in which I am most humbled and honored for the opportunity. I stand here today before you to ask that you consider some changes in the current proposed budget. We would like for you to end the step compression. As you know, back in 2016, Dr. Melinda Boom started a study. It is now 2023. That's seven years later, and we still have not ended this compression. Just know that every year that your veteran staff and teachers are loyal to NPS, they are getting less Social Security, less retirement. None of us or none of your staff have gone into Norfolk Public Schools to become rich. No, they did not. They're here because they're committed, but they should not have to choose whether they're going to pay a bill or put food on the table. It's important that you honor and respect your veteran teachers, especially because you have the money to do so. Use the SR funds. It was stated today, it only takes $5 more million to complete this compression. So please consider that as you look at your budget. Two, as I review the budget, I see a lot of things where you're giving bonuses to teachers coming in, which I understand that. But still, what about your veteran teachers and staff? They have been loyal to NPS. Don't you think they deserve a bonus? Third, please create a scale for one year, one step. Because what you're showing us in a lot of ways that, oh, we're on step 10. Oh, that compares to the other district. But in all actuality, it's comparing oranges and apples. Because our step 10 may be a years of experience for 20 years. And in another district, year 10 is step 10. I thank you for your time.
Pastor Veronica Thomas?
Good evening, everyone. Pastor Veronica Thomas, Pastor First United Presbyterian Church, 745 East 29th Street, Norfolk, Virginia 23504, also president of Let's Make a Difference. My concern is this. Before the pandemic, we were given, and when I say we, I mean the schools in my area, which are at-risk communities, hard to staff. I'm talking about Lindenwood, Ruffiner, Bogota, Young, Jake Cox. These are the schools in 04 that have real issues. And we cut out the stipend that would encourage teachers to come to at-rich avenues or at-rich communities. We need to support them. Most of those schools in 04 have long-term substitute teachers. We need people who are dedicated to our children on a regular basis. And I'm not asking you to do something that we don't do ourselves. We are in every one of those schools I listed, plus Campastella. We just picked up Monroe. We go in every month and give teachers appreciations. We give them a pound cake like they have. I know it's good. And we give them a special card that's made by us. And they asked us, you know, we get tired about 2 o'clock. So then we put hallelujah, a energy bar in there and a energy drink in there. And then we have nice therapeutic lotion. We have a mask in there. But that's what our teachers need. But they need us to stand by them. We just got in Monroe today, first day we've been to Monroe. And the young man came back and said, oh, I love that energy drink. It put a pep in my step. And that's what we are saying. We need you to support us and our schools. So we need that stipend back in there. Because no one wants to go to those schools. We look at young, people consider them sitting ducks where they're located. Who wants to go there? But we have to let them know that we care enough to put some money in the budget, a little bit more, to help them to want to go to the at-rich schools. Come on now. Wake up. You know that song? Wake up, everybody. No sleeping in bed. Hallelujah. No backwards thinking. We must think ahead and change the world. Hallelujah. Thank you.
Next, we have Vicki Greco, followed by Toni Goodwin.
Good evening. My name is Vicki Manugo-Greco. I'm an NPS parent and Lake Taylor graduate, former special educator, and school board advisory committee volunteer. I'll address the proposed budget and one I know so far. As the Lake Taylor High Class of 85 president for four years, I was guided by my first teachers, my parents, and my excellent teachers at Lake Taylor to believe, achieve, and succeed, to work harder and to take what I learned at NPS kindergarten through 12th grades, to learn even more about my world and myself at UVA. As a community reinvestment banker in pre-Catrina, New Orleans, I was told by my multimillion dollar corporation to do more with less in my compliance-driven work to help meet the financial needs of Louisiana's service markets, including low and moderate income communities. Later, as a new speech therapist with NPS and New Mom, I was told to leave no child behind before it was law, as I tried to ensure my workload efforts complied with special ed laws while assigned to two schools and serving students that exceeded recommended caseload sizes. This brings me to today and what the proposed fiscal year 24 operations budget tells our school community. The budget is a values- and priority-based document that aims to fund the daily challenges and celebrations of our NPS schoolchildren. We continually ask our students, teachers, and staff to work hard and hopefully help them to work smarter with evidence-based best practices and instructional resources and supports, healthy learning environments and school facilities, while asking them to persevere through the challenges posed by the community health crises of the pandemic, gun and physical violence, and social emotional traumas of poverty and systemic inequities. So what does the proposed budget really say to our young learners and adults we entrust to reach and teach them? Are we letting the grownups know NPS will invest the funds needed to address employee compensation and benefits while they're working so hard and they're so underpaid in light of staffing shortages? Are we telling all students in NPS of all abilities that we will be innovative and giving them real reasons to attend and learn every day at school so that they can build their own lives and livelihoods of lifelong learning and civic responsibility to each other? Are we ensuring the daily school start times and calendar year start are appropriate for optimal learning and success of our kids? Are we making sure our NPS workforce of educators are given ongoing professional development opportunities and supports that help them to work with all of our children of all abilities with compassion and innovation? Are we working smarter and harder together? Thank you.
That's a record. Toni Goodwin?
Good evening, Chair, Superintendent, and also the board's members of the Norfolk Public School Board. My name is Toni Goodwin. I'm a licensed real estate agent in the Hampton Roads area specializing in mixed-use development. And I just wanted to impart some information to you that might be of interest to your decision-making process on how you handle the Maury High School. The replacement is not necessarily a tear down of that existing building. I would impart upon you that I have, I've shared with a lot of my colleagues in the industry, the best lead certified buildings are the ones that don't make it to a landfill, that are repurposed and reused for generations to come. You've got massive developers coming into this city, taking buildings that are 50, 60, 70, 100 years old and converting them to modern-day facilities. What I'm sharing with you is the possibility and the consideration of taking and replacing Maury High School with a new-named high school simply down the road on Granby Street at Lafayette Park in front of the Norfolk Zoo. A much more, a larger facility, simply replacing that with the fields that you offer at Norfolk Public Schools at Maury High School, making the park there and retaining the historic structure to be repurposed into something that's great for all generations to come. Not only is this a potential savings to this school district in not tearing down a building, not paying for it, not abating it, and actually selling it to a developer that can do these conversions, but also where you can sell the building, an additional $2, $3, $4 million into your budget to go towards that new structure that could possibly be situated at the Crux intersection of 35th Street and Granby Street, right there on that park. This is obviously a wonderful opportunity for revitalization of the 35th Street corridor, which I was a property owner over there for a number of years, to revitalize 35th Street to a very prosperous facility. It's creeping across the railroad tracks, coming from Ghent and over towards Park Place and filling Park Place with a wonderful opportunity for new homeowners, new families, and more importantly, new students to this city. Retaining the history, and I can impart to you, retaining the history will go a long way, again, to a lot of your residents and also a lot of your constituents. I can share with you my experience in the history, in the history of real estate. I was the one that spoke up in Portsmouth, where I live, which is your neighboring city, to tell them that the city circuit courts, courthouses that were going to be placed across the street in the 11th hour was a decision to not do the project, save $15 million, build it just down the street, and still get all the courts they needed in one fail swoop. So the savings are there, and I recommend or inquire you to ask about, inquiry about what we can talk about together. Thank you.
This concludes our speakers for agenda items only.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Tanner. Up next, we have the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Dr. Gabriel. Can I get a second?
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Tanner. Any questions? All right. Ms. Tanner, spell the question.
Basine?
Aye.
Buffalo?
Aye.
Emerson?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye. All right. Thank you, everyone. Up next, we have our monthly financial report, presented by Mr. Jenkins.
Good evening, Dr. Martin, Vice Chair, Buffalo, Dr. Burtz Song, and members of the board. We are reviewing the financial report for the month of January. This is the seventh month of the year. We started July 1st. At this point, we have received $204 million of their $383 million budget. So we are at 53%. This compares with the previous two years of between 49 and 50%. Turning to page three of the highlights, we have graphs of their spending to date, and also the revenue that we've taken in. We've spent or incurred $184 million, or 46% of our budget. And you can see in the red, the revenue of 204. During the prior two-year spending was at 48% of the budget. So we're slightly behind on spending compared to the previous two years. Turning to the next page, we have graphs of monthly revenue for the current and previous two years. And you can see the spending is in line with prior years. More detailed information of their, regarding our budget is available starting on page five. There were three budget transfers appearing on page 15, I believe. The first was to transfer money by learning support to address part-time clerical, staff supplies, and contract service needs. And then there were two entries from school facilities to address heating and cooling costs. Chairman Martin, that concludes my comments. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Jenkins? Jordan, go ahead.
Just on page 16 with the budget transfers again. So
Yes, sir.
Can you elaborate just a little more, first with the one dealing with special education? What is it saying to us in terms of what our original projected budget was and the need to do these transfers? Can you speak to that a little more?
Sure. First, it doesn't change our total budget. It stays the same. We're simply transferring funds. In this case, we're also transferring money from the summer program, which I think was largely funded through the coronavirus funds or the ESRT funds. So there was money available for tuition payments and teacher and assistance. We were running short in the contract services. I think it's primarily speech, physical therapy, and the like, and then some other incidental costs. So we made transfers there. The second entry, we transferred funds.
Before you leave the special ed one, so are you, are you saying that we had increased demands and that's why we ran out of funds that we had budgeted? Or what's the?
Demands were higher than the funds we had allotted, yes.
I'm sorry.
The demands were higher than the amount that we had allotted, especially for the contract services. With respect to the facilities group, we had more money budgeted in materials and supplies than we needed, but we needed, we needed money in contract services. And the last entry is transferring money between two very closely related accounts, one contract service account to another. So they're very similar, but there was actually a transfer made.
Generally speaking, are these increases in the cost of services or just?
I would say there's a difference between how we spend and how we had budgeted, but the total, the total spending isn't really changing, especially on the, on the facilities group. It's simply, we, in the first one, we needed more money in the contract services and less in supplies or materials. And the second entry is really between two contract service accounts.
So is it, is it likely moving forward then, since we are, at least this report goes through January, that we may find additional transfers needed for the rest of the year?
I have just signed off on one already for the month of January, for the month of February that you'll get. So yes, we're still, we continue. Budget directors, excuse me, the budget managers within the departments are transferring money as, as they need, as their spending is different from what they had originally planned for a variety of reasons to keep their accounts in order.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Jenkins?
Thank you.
Can I get a motion to adopt the monthly financial report?
I move that we adopt the monthly financial report, subject to audit.
Thank you, Dr. Gabriel. Can I get a second?
Second, Tanner, please call a question.
Second, Ms. Tanner, please call a question.
Bassin.
Bassin, are you with us?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Buffalo?
Aye.
Hampson?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye. Thank you, everyone. All right, up next, we have our school year 2023-24 academic calendar discussion and vote. Go ahead, Dr. Paul, how are you?
Doing well, thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Martin, Vice Chair, Ms. Buffalo, members of the board, and Dr. Birdsong. This evening, we're requesting a vote on the 23-24 academic calendar that was presented at the last board meeting, the option-one amended calendar, and I stand ready for questions or discussions you may have.
Any questions? Hampson?
I am disappointed that we are leaving our calendar as it has been for the last few decades after they changed the school openings because they wanted to have the kids there to work at Busch Gardens when they built it. That's the whole reason that it was changed. And now we left not taking the opportunity to start school a couple of weeks early while the children are fresh and introducing them to their studies. Instead, we are sticking it at the end of the year, once again, after we've done all the testing, we have to have already done the teaching, then we do the testing, and then Memorial Day comes and the kids come back to school with three more weeks, two or three more weeks, when they've already finished their studies and they're tired after all the testing, but that's when they'll be doing it, and then they'll be sitting there. So I'm disappointed, and I certainly will not be supporting the calendar.
Questions or discussion? Mr. Jordan and then Dr. Gabriel.
Yeah, I agree with Ms. Hampson. My expectation was, when we discussed it at the work session and had some comments about possibly doing a phase-in, that I didn't know we were going to just come back today and vote on what we originally received. So I agree with Ms. Hampson. I think that there's good reason in terms of supporting student outcomes for us to start sooner, and I agree with her. I think that, at least my expectation was, that we were going to at least consider starting a little earlier before Labor Day in the upcoming year and then potentially phasing in. So too, I'm disappointed that we've just, are coming back with the original recommendation. I won't be supporting the recommendation either.
Dr. Gabriel, go ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Martin, and thank you, Dr. Birdsong and Dr. Paul for the presentation. I was able to view it online, and I'm not in support of this either because our students need that time to come in and to kind of get introduced to their schools, and that way, the day after Labor Day starts, they're ready to hit the pavement in quality learning. So I'm not ready to accept this proposal either. I think we need to think about it again in terms of the student outcomes because every minute that we can get in of learning time before they're to sit for those standardized tests, which I hate to be really curtailing, creating a schedule based upon that. It is what it is, and our students do need that additional time.
Dr. Gabriel, Ms. Bassin, do you have a comment or question?
Yes, I do. I too, like my other colleagues, am also disappointed that this option has come through. I thought we had really good discussion about implementing a, you know, a calendar in a two-year interval as well as a phase-in over the next two years. So as I said last year, when we were in this process and at the work session, you know, I certainly support a calendar that supports positive, you know, setting up a calendar that promotes better outcomes for our students, and I will not be supporting the current recommendation. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Oh, I agree with my colleagues. As someone who serves in a district who had started last year before Labor Day and has knows that the week before Labor Day does provide students with an opportunity with extra instructional time, and like I said before in the work session, I do believe the entire peninsula now is starting before Labor Day. So I agree with my colleagues as well that I will support a calendar where instructional time starts prior to Labor Day, so that's where I stand as well.
All right, so what I'm... Okay, go ahead. Go for it, yeah.
So if I could, and I appreciate hearing the board's comments, and I do recall the discussion very well, and when I left, you know, my understanding was we were going to look at that phased-in approach following. If the board recalls, the second-choice option was option four, which was an early-start calendar, I would make the recommendation, if the board supports, and clearly the board supports an earlier start, that we put options three and four back out to the community for another vote. They both start before Labor Day, give those as the only two options, so that then we do have a before-Labor Day start. And then I would recommend doing the phase-in of the second week early, if that's the board's wish, another year out. For one, the main reason is our IT department has concerns about reporting, and our teachers would have major concerns about a two-week shorter summer, all in one false swoop. So that would be a concern I would want to share with the board on that. I would respectfully request, though, a vote tonight to amend the start date to be the Monday before Labor Day, if that's the board's wish, simply because we cannot start student registrations until we have a start date because of our system. Our CIST will not allow it. So as long as we have a vote on the date, I think we can take it back to the community with the options, again, the two before-Labor Day options that we had out there.
So, Dr. Birdsong?
Or the board can simply decide what it wants to do at this point.
Correct.
Any opposition to voting on the Monday before Labor Day start date?
I'm looking at...
Well, I'd like to say what I said before about the fact that we were not given the option for the two-week start date instead of just one week. And so I'm still having some concerns about that because in that two weeks, you get everything rolling. I mean, you're moving along with your academics, and so, instead of stretching it out, I didn't understand that to begin with, and then I was surprised last meeting when it was not there, not the two-week before-school opening, which is what most of the districts are doing in this region. We're also happy not to finally have to have Busch Gardens determining our calendar. And so that's, I have, so I still have a little concern about that piece, but I will go with the board this time and do what seems to be the majority, but I would have loved to have seen that option given to our parents because one week sometimes can be kind of messy, and you have to wait another year, and then you've got to change it again. I just thought that that was kind of disrespectful to the families, that they would have to have two different things and change what they were doing over two years. So I still have a little problem with that.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Birdsong?
So I'd just like, I would like for Dr. Paul to recap how we got to the examples that we gave to you. This was not something that the administration came up with. You asked us to engage our stakeholders, and that's what we did. We engaged our teachers, we engaged our parents, we engaged students, and so we presented the options that they preferred. It wasn't necessarily that this is something that the administration wanted to do, so we wanted to honor what they requested, and those are the options that were presented to the board. And again, we are happy to make any changes that we need to make, but we wanted to honor the process.
And just as a brief...
Dr. Martin?
Yes, Ms. Bassin?
I wanted to, well, if Dr. Paul's about to provide further context, I would like to allow him to continue just as he was about to, and then if he could come back to me after that, that would be great.
Okay, I'll do that, thanks. Go ahead.
So if you recall, in October, we did an early-start-only survey, and it was really split on one week before or after Labor Day start. The lowest amount of responses were for a two-week before start. So that led to conversation within the calendar committee about what would that look like, and that's where we had concerns internally about starting two weeks earlier because of our IT processes and state reporting processes, as well as the teachers really concerned about losing two weeks in a summer break all in one summer. So that's why the calendar committee, the teacher forum, all the input received from them was if we do an early start, to do a one-week early start. So with all the input provided from them, created the four options to where we did the survey for parent feedback, and then that was the feedback that was shared and driven for the final option that was presented to the board.
Dr. Paul, I just want to say, I know that this has been going on for a couple of years now, and it's been very intentional, and I think you've thought, everyone involved has put a lot of thought into this on the best way to kind of please the most amount of people, so I just want to let you know that it's noticed, and I appreciate that. Go ahead, Ms. Bassin.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. So one of the things, just based on, you know, everything Dr. Paul and Dr. Birdsong have discussed so far about the stakeholder input, and one of the things we talked about in the work session is that we receive this input. We're at this point, you know, in February going into March, where, you know, which I think was later than many of us had hoped we would be with the calendar discussion. So one thing that we talked about at the work session was that if this is the option that was supported by stakeholders, by the stakeholders that we received input from, that we could perhaps consider accepting this recommendation, however, with the direction that starting next year, next year when I'm talking about the next school year, that we would come back with a two-year calendar that started with the phase-in, that right now, that would then show that today, whatever vote is taken, that the vote would say that we are accepting the current recommendation, but we're also communicating to our internal, external stakeholders that, starting the next academic school year after this calendar, we would begin the phase-in process, so that communication is early and clear to everyone that our goal is to provide greater, I mean, more instructional time in the future. So that was something that seemed to be accepted, given we're at this point in the school year, and we've received the input that we have received so far and what that data showed. So, you know, I just want to pose that out to all of you to consider that and for, you know, another way to go about this.
What I'm hearing, Mrs. Bassin, is that we accept the recommendation from the administration with including in the motion that giving them, to have them to, next year when we get here, that we should see a calendar that has a phase-in approach. So what I'm hearing is that so we can have, yeah, to communicate that with families so they know that it's coming. But what I'm hearing, Ms. Bassin, say today is to accept the recommendation with knowing that we're going to move forward with a phase-in approach.
I have a question. Dr. Paul?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. If we, as you suggested as an option, to take the other two calendars that have pre-Labor Day starts and put them out there again specifically for the survey, would we be able to then vote in March, a month out? What kind of timeline would that require?
So we're really at the limit. If we're going to do an early start, we need to know that we're going to do an early start. So if the board's desire is to do an early start for the 23-24 school year, we would need to vote on that tonight. That is what we have to know at this point to be able to integrate our CIST for an early start and to be ready for it.
But I'm hearing that we all want an early start except for Ms. Bassin suggesting wait until next year. Go ahead, Dr. Gabriel.
Dr. Birdsong, I 100% hear what you and the administration are saying about receiving the feedback and you're presenting what stakeholders have presented. From your vantage point, how difficult is it going to be to do for the 2023-2024 school year to start on the Monday before Labor Day, the one-week early option? How difficult is that? How...
I think operationally, we would be able to do that a week ahead. The two weeks, as Dr. Paul has stated, would be tremendously difficult, but we could be prepared to start a week in advance.
I would support that.
I'll support it, too.
Could you point them to a specific option?
I remember it's the one that I voted for.
So I want to be cautious on this. So the second-place option was option four, but that option also has the varied winter break. So the winter break starts on Christmas week and then goes through the week of New Year's, and that was the second-choice option. So option three and four were the two that had the early-start option.
But both of them had a two-week...
They both have a two-week, correct.
Because our teachers and students need two-week...
Right, one has a two-week and a day break because the first falls on a Monday. So if we, option three, it starts on the 18th of December, so the week before Christmas holiday through the week of Christmas and the New Year's Day Monday. Option four, which was the second-highest calendar, the holiday actually starts on December 25th because that's a Monday, and it goes through January 5th.
So either way, they get two full weeks.
They get two full weeks. One calendar gives the March holiday back because we gain that one day back, and one calendar does not have the March holiday. So that was the big difference between the two. Option four has the March holiday.
Questions?
Yeah, because I just want to admit I'm lost. So, Dr. Paul, can you go back? You were saying that you were recommending that the board consider having, if it was desired the board to start prior to Labor Day, that the board say tonight that we would do that, what's that, August 28th, if my calendar is correct?
You're correct.
Okay, and so if we say August 28th, you said that internally it would allow you to do certain things even as you go out and survey again around other impacts of the August 28th start. Is that correct?
Correct.
And now what do we say? What is it, where are we trying to make sure I'm following? Is it something different that we're, that's on the table now?
I thought we were going with the will of the board at this point, Ms. Tanner. That's what I heard Ms. Buffalo say.
That's what I'm trying to figure out what the will is.
Okay.
You want to jump on it, right?
If we do option four, which is the second-most popular option according to the survey, with the Monday, August 28th, 2023, pre-Labor Day start, that gives us that one week so that then we can start projecting the transition to potentially a two-week for the next year.
Right, I guess what I, if Dr. Paul was, as I understood, was trying to find a middle ground to have the board say, start August 28th, then can we just do that? And then whatever other things that the administration feels is necessary to come back and have us do anything additional, that's what we would do after they've had an opportunity to respond to what we've asked them to do.
Any questions for Mr. Jordan on what he just said? Does everyone understand that? We will be, we would make a motion to simply say we want to start on Monday, we want the 2023-24 school year to begin on Monday, August 28th of '23. the 2023, 24 school year to begin on Monday, August 28th of '23, and then put the survey out for the two pre-Labor Day start days, and then come back for that decision. Is that?
Which would then also allow us to talk about, once we secure that, what we would want to do in the subsequent years to get to what I heard Ms. Campson and Ms. Bassin and others say in terms of getting to beyond just the Monday prior to Labor Day. Is that?
Right. So at that point, we could do what Ms. Bassin suggested. If we're not, can't go two weeks now, we, we go one week and then two weeks next year. So it was a two, with a two-year calendar each time, so people knew well ahead. Or do we not mess with that at this time?
I don't understand why we don't just take the second option, though, the second most popular option, and just be done with it tonight and still work, and still work forward on transitioning for the second year.
Makes more sense.
I mean, I'm only responding because I heard the.
A couple of different things.
Because I heard the concerns raised, and so if it's easier for us to just say the Monday before, if the administration is saying that there is some benefit of us making that decision, and for them to be able to go back and get some additional feedback, I don't know how long that's going to take. But, you know, we meet again March 1st, I don't know.
I also heard Dr. Paul say he needed to know tonight.
That's what I'm trying to give.
Let's do that. That's what I recommend. We need to move forward for, for next year's calendar. And then we can bring back recommendations for the next year's calendar.
So I.
So it, it sounds like when we put every.
Yes, Ms. Bassin, just a moment.
It sounds like if, if the board, if it's the board, the board's will to accept the calendar, the second option for next year, the information that we're bringing back to you will be based on going ahead and letting the community know that you've already decided that you wanted a two-week start for next year. So based on the two-week early start, then providing some input around some of the other days. Is that, is that what I'm hearing? I just want to make sure that I'm clear.
That's what I'm saying, yes.
Mr. Jordan, is that what you're saying?
I want to know, I want to know if that's what Dr. Paul is saying.
I'm saying exactly what Dr. Birdsong asked.
Good answer.
That's what you wanted.
No, I'm just, I'm not, again, it's, it's, I just want to be clear, because, you know.
Me, too.
Just so we don't find ourselves in a situation where we aren't clear.
That's right, yeah.
And/or we find ourselves in a situation that we think we're clear today, and then six months down the road, something changes. So if there's, you know, when we start going to a specific option, I'm, I'm, I'm not astute enough to understand how going to the specific option and doing the additional feedback go together. I, I, I get saying the Monday before Labor Day and getting out the way. I get that piece. I don't, I don't fully get the, the rest of it.
I think it's because they need it, they need to have everything attached to the start date, you know, what dates, what dates winter break brings. And so that was the advantage of using calendar four, which I, is that it, it adds the one-week start, and it also tells you what to do with all the other days.
I'm going to bring Ms. Bassin back in, because she's been waiting patiently. Ms. Bassin, go ahead. What was your comment?
Yeah, so I guess to Mr. Jordan's point is, you know, I, I'm unclear, like, I get the, you know, making a decision about when to start, but I guess where I have a little bit of concern is, we put out a survey or, or whatever for, for additional feedback, which I know, at least, you know, I know our stakeholders or families are quite exhausted with the, the amount of surveying that has been going on related to the calendar, and it's been a bit confusing. And I think we've already done two sets of, you know, surveying with, you know, the one we did early in the fall and this. So I just want to put it back out there that while I don't, I personally didn't vote for or, or like the option, I'm talking about the original option that was recommended tonight, I think the cleanest approach for me, from my perspective, is to accept this option, however, that for the 24, 25 school year, we begin with this phased approach. Because the nuances of, of whatever needs to be figured, you know, we make a decision tonight about starting, or I guess what I need to better understand is that while we might say tonight, we want to start the Monday before Labor Day, what the nuances are, you know, whether it's future contracts, whether it's, you know, whatever it is, I'm not clear on those pieces, to know how, what kind of impact that will have, to say with, with, just because it's something that I know will benefit students. Without knowing what the, how, what the impact is, I, I have some hesitancy. So that's, that's kind of where I am. So I just want to kind of come back and say that there is this other option, even though we don't, I think most of us don't love it, to accept the option that was originally recommended, but to go forward with the 24, 25 school year, I think that, or 20, I'm sorry.
23, 24.
Yeah, for the 23, 24 school year. Yeah, so we start with the, with the option that was, you know, the stakeholders, the majority of stakeholders liked the, the recommendation of the administration, administration based on that input, and then go forward with this phased approach. So I just want to put that option out there again, and, and to ask Dr. Paul, Dr. Birdsong, if, if that, A, if, if, if that is the cleanest approach, and two, if, if we do go with the Monday before Labor Day, I need a better understanding of what the nuances are, and could there possibly be complications, like in the months to come, that would negatively impact a smooth start?
Ms. Bassin, do you have the calendar number four in front of you? That was the pre-Labor Day, pre-Mondays, pre-Labor Day Monday start?
Oh, oh, I under, I understand the calendars. My, my question isn't about the calendars itself. It is now that we have received all the input, I, I'm, what I'm hearing is that there's going to be another survey that goes out.
No, not if we vote tonight. We're going to vote tonight, so there won't be another survey going out.
Okay. There will not be another survey, okay. Because I heard feedback still being sought, and so that's why I was confused about what we're asking feedback on, and then what impact that will have moving forward. So if there's no further.
Yeah.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Dr. Birdsong has a comment.
So, Ms. Bassin, you and I are saying the same thing. Basically, the board, if it's the will of the board, you would move forward with voting for a calendar for next year, which would be option four. By doing so, you will, you're honoring the feedback that we have received from our parents and teachers and, and kids, I'm sorry, number one, I'm sorry, thank you, Dr. Paul, that the board would move forward with a, a calendar for next school year. Then as we start planning for the 2024, 2025 school year, we would let the public know that is the will of the board already to have a two-week pre-Labor Day start, and all the additional new nuances, we would figure that out with the input of our stakeholders. So I think that's, that's, yeah, with the, the next year's calendar.
Yeah, that seems like the cleanest approach, and that we could, I think, stay with confidence that it will be done well versus, you know, create any further community, confusion in the community, or, I'm sorry?
We're listening.
Oh, I don't know if you can hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Very well.
I mean, that, that's just, that's, that's my, because I think I'm, I'm a bit confused with these other options and what's being suggested tonight, but I think the, I, I want, I want to be able to do this really well, and to have the administration be able to consider all the nuances before we make a decision, rather than just saying, we're going to do it on this date now, and then, so that's just my, my personal preference. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So, Dr. Martin?
Yes.
I'd like to move that the board have the calendar for the upcoming school year, 23, 24, to start the Monday before Labor Day.
Second.
Any discussion? No? Good. Thank you. All right, Ms. Tanner, please call a question.
Bassin?
For option, oh, option one, option three.
That's three or four.
Which option is it?
Oh, finally a moment.
If you're.
They were saying they need to have a vote tonight.
I am, I'm voting on.
This is why it's confusing.
Why don't we just vote on what you just?
My motion was my motion.
And then they can.
If anybody wants to amend it, they can amend it. Yes.
Let's go with, with Mr. Jordan.
Okay.
Okay, Bassin?
I'm voting nay because of the reasons I just stated. I don't have the objection, but I, I don't like working out the details later kind of method in, in ensuring that we are setting up our students for success at the start of the school year. Thanks.
Buffalo?
I'm going to vote nay as well, and I'll say why I'm voting nay, because I do want to respect the stakeholders in the survey that went out. Two, I want to say that if we're going to do things, we're going to do it right and in order. So we will be ready to hit the ground running in '24, '25. And so with that said, I'm going to vote nay.
Campson?
I'm voting yes. We follow Mr. Jordan's recommendation to start on August 28th. Schools in this, some school districts, we're making this decision back in the summer. The fact that we've taken so long to do it should not change what we're doing. We just need to tighten it up. So I'm voting yes in support of the, Mr. Jordan's motion.
Gabriel?
This is very complicated. I am in support of starting pre-Labor Day, but I completely understand the administration's need to have planning and have the guidelines. And so I'm going to vote nay for right now.
Jordan?
Well, I put the motion on the floor. I respect the community input. I believe community input is, is very important, but I also believe that we've talked about more time in pre-Labor Day starts for, for quite a while. And so I regret that perhaps the board could have been clearer earlier on about our intent around the pre-Labor Day start. But I put the motion on the floor because my understanding was that saying the Monday before Labor Day would provide direction for the administration and give the administration some flexibility in terms of what other adjustments may need to be made versus voting on a specific option at this time. So that's why I put it on the floor, to try to get us to make a decision one way or the other. I made the motion, and I support the motion, and I vote aye.
And Martin?
I vote nay. Because I want to vote on a calendar.
So the motion failed, correct?
The motion failed, all right. I, I move, I move that we support option three.
Option three.
Option three is pre-Labor Day start, and it, it gives the two-week calendar for the two-week Christmas break, holiday break in December.
You talked, the second most popular one was option four, right?
Correct.
And that gives both the two weeks off, but it goes into January and the March date off.
Right. I like option three, though.
Like option three?
I do. I like option three, and I, and I, and I completely respect the survey and the data, as, as I said before, but I'll, I'll put that out, out on the table as a motion.
So we're starting the whole motion again?
Yes. If it can get a second.
There doesn't have to be a second.
It doesn't. It could fail right now.
Because you're doing amendment, you're doing an amendment, right?
No, I, I, I move.
Put a motion forward to adopt option three.
Which is one-week early start?
Yes, one-week early start, two weeks off in December, but you, two weeks and a day. Oh, was that the only? No, 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 there's, there's another pre-Labor Day start. Yes, could you please explain this to us?
Option three and four, option three and four both have a pre-Labor Day start. Option three has a traditional two-week winter holiday plus a day, because the first falls on a day. So that's clearly going to be a day off of school, a holiday. Option two, or option four, pre-Labor Day start. The only difference is the winter break is the week of December 25th and the week of New Year's Day. And then that frees up a day that gave us that March holiday again for a March break for teachers. It just changes that winter break to be non-traditional. That's the only difference between the two options.
So could, so, so could you give us your motion again? To adopt option three?
Yes. I move that we adopt option three.
I don't hear a second.
Second? I'll go ahead and second it, which, it's a week early start, two weeks at winter. We need to decide this. We need to be able, you know, there reaches a point when failure to make a decision is a failure of leadership.
Let me, let me, Dr. Martin, if, if I may, we had 8,040 total responses. Forty-one percent of those who responded said yes to an early start date. If you go back and look at the data, the responses were parents, a large majority of parents, almost 2,000 parents, and almost 2,000 staff members. There was about, let me get your data here, Dr. Paul, it's great data. Twenty, basically 2,500 staff members responded to the survey, 463 students. Going back to what Mr. Jordan said about sometimes as, as board members and as administrators, we have the data in front of us. We know that student outcomes for us, for Norfolk Public Schools, our students need to be in the seats earlier. So the conflict comes in respecting the data of the 8,000 people who did respond, which I, I totally respect it. But when you look at the breakdown of how they responded, it, it wasn't, you know, 8,000 that responded for, for one particular item. It was, you know, it was, it was divided. We need to do what's in the best interest for the students, and I think that, you know, if we go with either option three or option four, they're providing that attention to student outcomes, which is why we are here. So I am putting out a motion right now to say, let's support an early start date, pre-Labor Day. Option three just gives the consistency of the winter holiday so that it's two weeks, but honestly, I could go with option four, too. But I do feel we need to start before Labor Day. And, and going on a calendar will give you all the clarity that you need and allow the time for any further massaging of the calendar in the years to come.
So can we suspend the motion to say three or four, and we just go around and say which one we want?
Why don't we?
Well, we have a motion.
Decide what we want, when, whom we're going to start, and then leave it up to our lead, our person that we hired for this job to do all the detailing.
Because they already did the detailing, and he needs to know tonight.
So we have a motion, and we have a second.
Did she second yet?
She did second.
Campson did.
She did second, so.
I was ready to compromise, so we can get this done.
Naya, go ahead.
If I may, I just would like to provide just additional commentary. So it, it is my understanding that we've already established that we will be starting the school year before Labor Day, which I think is a solid idea. Where I come in with, with my commentary is that I think that we also need to acknowledge the fact that only 8,000 people responded to the survey. I feel as though while we absolutely respect the respondents that did give their opinion, it is important to remember that there are a lot more opinions out there that were not accounted for. And I also would like to take note that adding too many changes at once could cause issues. So I think that having an option three. at once could cause issues. So I think that having option three, where you're not changing too much at once, would be the best fit for students, parents and teachers alike. Just to take that into consideration, please and thank you.
All right, Ms. Tanner, please call the question.
Yes. Basine?
I am voting nay for the same reasons that I voted against the previous motion. I firmly, you know, believe that this needs to be done right and I, I'm just concerned and I think this discussion is evident of so much of what we need to be sure we are all on the same page about what we want to do going forward. So I vote nay.
Buffalo?
I'm going to vote nay because I'm sitting on Ms. Dais and I am just so uneasy, like Ms. Basine. So I, I really want it early, before Labor Day start, but I just want to make sure that it's, it's done right and we give, you know, the administration time and, and not going back, changing calendars in the middle of the game and just making sure that we have this right. So, and then option three, I'm just not, I think that the Chris, the winter break starts December 25th and then goes the first week of January.
No, that's.
That's four.
That's four.
Okay. So my parents out there.
Vote, vote, vote.
Yeah.
Make up your mind.
I always want to do things right and the best for families and, and in order. So.
Get it right, like Ms. Basine said.
I really want to get it right. So I'll, I'll stick with nay.
Okay. Camson?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Present.
No.
That's already been established.
No.
Is he really here?
Seriously, I, I, like I said, I think we should, the, the original thought that I thought was we could provide some direction and get out the weeds. And I'm, I'm worried that the, that the votes now are all in the weeds and I, I just don't want to be there. I just want to be able to say right now what the previous motion had failed. So I'm just going to let this one walk and we'll, we'll see what, what, what comes up next.
What's your vote, sir? I'm sorry.
Present.
He's walking. So you abstaining?
A vote present.
Martin?
Nay. I would like to make a motion that we adopt Calendar Four. Can I get a second?
Second. What, what's happening now?
Calendar Four. Thank you. Any discussion about Calendar Four?
I, please, no. Dr. Martin, for the sake of not doing this again and, and this being the last vote.
Yes.
Dr. Pol clearly state what that option reflects and says.
Option four starts August 28th, so the week before Labor Day. Friday, September 1st would be a teacher work day because the law says students cannot be in school on the Friday before Labor Day. It has a four-day weekend for them. It has all the same holidays as the other options. The only difference is winter break. Winter break for option four starts December 25th. So the last day for students and staff would be the 22nd for winter holiday. And then the last day, they would come back on January 8th. So it's still a two full weeks. It's just non-traditional two full weeks. Previously, with Norfolk Public Schools and other schools across the division, the 22nd has been an end date for school. You know, if, if, if the, if the 25th fell like on a Friday, sometimes they would exit on the 22nd. And then the rest is the same. The spring break's the same. The other holidays are the same. The only difference is since the two-week break is non-traditional, it also adds a holiday on March 11th for a break like we added to the calendar this year for teachers to have that break in March. So that's the option four.
I just, I ask just one, one question.
Yes, one question, Mr. Jordan.
So if we, if we do this option and we have the first week of January off as a holiday, the first week in January, are we then the only school division in the region that would have that first week off in January?
To my knowledge, yes.
And which, which, my one concern there is considering that our employees come from all over, having that one little anomaly for us only, just to be, raises some concerns about, you know, childcare and supports and all the other things that come up with, with, with that split that way.
And I will, I will add, Mr. Jordan, the calendar for Virginia Beach and the calendar that's out for survey now for Chesapeake, they also don't have the full week before Christmas off. So even, even if we had that week off, it presents the same challenges because they're going to be going to school in Chesapeake on those days and we would not be.
Thank you.
Or Virginia Beach, both of us.
Buffalo?
Nay.
Camson?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
We finally found one.
We got a calendar.
It was a three, three.
Four.
Option four.
Four.
Option four. Just being clear for the record.
All right.
Did you get that, Ms. Tanner?
Who, who knew? That was going to be so contentious. Okay.
Which option?
Four.
Four.
Spell it.
Just spell it. All right. Up next, we have citizens' comments on non-agenda items. Ms. Tanner?
Okay, hold on one second and we catch up. Okay. We have.
We always do our calendars.
Option three. We have one speaker for non-agenda items and Melissa Garmann again.
That's what, that's what's important, student outcomes. And we're going to call it South Side Sten Academy Act, Kate Costello.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, go ahead.
I was up here earlier, so I won't waste time introducing myself. What I passed to Ms. Tanner that you're all getting is a spreadsheet that I put together identifying the chronic absentee rate, absenteeism rate based on VDOE input, which I got to through the MPS website. If you look, we have only two schools that at the end of last school year did not have chronic absenteeism. We only have two schools that were below the 10% threshold that VDOE identifies. If you look, please note an error, Chesterfield Academy should be red. Their absenteeism rate last year was 41.6%. That puts nine schools in this district who had an absenteeism rate greater than 30% at the end of last school year. The yellow ones are the four who were below 15%, so close to that threshold. And all of the remaining schools fall between 30% and 15%. I know that our superintendent's budget notes that for the, the current school year, attendance was waived as a measure for accreditation, but that will not be the case next year. It has been a concerted effort across individual schools throughout the district to battle absenteeism. I'm concerned about what is this board, what is our city doing to address this now rather than wait till whatever day we start next school year. When I first started at MPS in the 2018, 2019, I'm sorry, 2019, 2020 school year, there was talk about changing school staggers. I think, I would hope we all agree that any surveys done pre-COVID about school staggers are probably invalid. I started this journey looking to see if we could identify a specific region in our city where maybe these staggers were so we could have town hall meetings and find out in those particular areas, what are the challenges that parents are facing. But this is citywide. It is citywide. We, you talk about it's important to get kids in seats as early as possible. We got to get kids in the schools. We have two schools under 10%. We got to get them in the schools. And the way we do that is not worrying about what day we start. The way we do that is what are, what is keeping them from coming to school? Our PTAs are struggling for momentum to try to get parent involvement within the schools. Is there not a campaign we can start to help improve and get parents wanting to start our PTAs? Can we not have town halls to say, how can we help you get your kids to school? Where are you struggling? What do you need? We've done tremendous things with our school nutrition program with providing meals to address school and secu, I mean, food insecurity. Please focus on how we're going to get these kids in school.
Thank you.
That was our last speaker for this evening.
All right. And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a safe drive home.